Thank you for joining us this evening for the April 5th, 2022 Montessorino Regular City Council Meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council's special meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speak. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes taken at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. We will now call the meeting to order and the first item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. I will go ahead and decide the pledge today. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes in the orders of the day?
No, Mayor, but let me take roll call.
Yes, I keep forgetting.
No worries. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Lawler?
Here.
Councilmember Luthold? Mayor Pretet Mekachuk?
Present.
And Mayor Alahi?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much for reminding me again. Keep reminding me. And then, I understand there's no changes in orders of the day, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, let's go ahead and go to his presentations. Do we have any presentations? We have a recognition of the 2021 STEM winners from the city of Montessorino. Is... Did we go forward with that? Is there a staff report on that?
We do not have a staff report, but we do have Ms. Alena from the STEM project on the line. I'm promoting her to panelist and she would like to share a few words with the council.
Yeah, sounds good. There you are. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Alina Chaduri and I am board member of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. At first, I would like to congratulate all of our STEM winners who have worked so diligently to present their research projects. We just recently, on March 10th, had a virtual fair with over 800 students presenting 600 projects of their scientific findings and excellence in math, engineering and science. We here in the board are very happy to mentor and guide the students to accomplish and have greater achievements in the field of science and engineering, math and technology, and go further from the local fair competitions all the way to the state and then international level and achievements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're doing a tremendous job. And I understand there are five individuals who are STEM winners. I presume they're all from Montessorino. I don't know if any of them is with us. I would take their name, Disha Gupta, Catherine Mekachuk. That name sounds somewhat familiar. And congratulations. Shasvat Ramachandran, Yash Sharma and Sahil Verma. And I think and Vina Tang. I believe those are all the names. So congratulations to all of those individuals and they're recognized as STEM winners. And we appreciate all the hard work they're doing. Thank you so much and thank you, Alena, for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Anything else you wanted to add or anybody else?
That's all. I'm filling in for another board member, Dr. Forrest Williams. He is attending another award ceremony, so I'm here. And always happy to do so.
It's a good evening for you. You've been recognized everywhere. So that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. Our next item is, are there any oral communications? I don't believe there are any oral communications and are there any written communications to the board?
No written communications received.
Okay. Then we go on to the consent calendar. Does anybody want any items pulled from the consent calendar? Anyone on the public phones want any item pulled on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, second? All right, so we have a motion and a second. If you can go ahead and take roll call, please.
Councilmember Luthold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Pretet Mekachuk?
Aye.
And Mayor Alahi?
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. So next we go to public hearings, the unfinished business has to do with discussion on design and construction of the Montessorino Community Center project and for providing direction to staff. So can we first get a staff report on that, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, Engineer Khan, welcome to the council.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will keep this fairly brief. The fiscal year 2122 budget included an item of $600,000 for converting the annex building next door to City Hall into a community center space. There is some grant funded funding associated with this project and also general funds. The project has been designed and has a current building permit and staff went out to bid with this current design in August of 2021. The bid results were presented to council later that month and the council declined to award a contract to a to a sorry, to a consultant. And the Finance Ad Hoc Committee is going to review the project for cost savings and other recommendations. That presentation from the subcommittee is included in the agenda packet this evening and I am here if to ask, answer any questions you may have regarding the background on the project, but I believe the bulk of this presentation is to be made by the Ad Hoc Finance Committee.
So...
I'm sorry, I was unmuted. I'm just going to summarize it a little bit. I was going to thank Engineer Khan for the great work they've been doing and the staff that's been doing that. And I especially will turn it over now to our mayor, Brian Mekachuk, who's done a heck of a lot of work on this. He's been working really hard. And take it away, Mayor Mekachuk.
Thank you. Could you put up the presentation slides that I've got, please? And I'd like to walk through them quickly.
You have to start from page 92.
Give me one second. I'll have it up.
While you're doing that, what I'd like to say is that the Ad Hoc Finance Committee picked this up and as we go through, I'd like City Engineer Khan to jump in at any time. And then also, if you've got questions and comments, I fully welcome her to respond and join with me in that. So I've everyone got this in the package, but oh, there we are, perfect. Yeah, if you could go, so just go to the next slide, please. There we are. So we're recommending that we change certain elements of the of the design so it can be a showcase for energy efficiency, going all electric and also water conservation. I anticipate that we would be able to receive some financial support from SVC and Valley Water. Part of this is to improve the bidding process and we've got to advertise as required in a local newspaper and in an online bidding forum. But as well, I think there's the opportunity to solicit, to actually solicit bids from at least from four qualified bidders. If we simplify the big package, I think that'll be helpful. And then also, this is a key point, to reduce the risk of unknown conditions because no one really knows what's going on in that building. And I, the Finance Ad Hoc Committee believes this can be completed by December 31. Next slide, please.
And Mayor Brotem, I will sort of comment just on the bidding aspect. Assuming that the scope of the project remains above the, I believe it's a $212,000 threshold. It would be subject to formal competitive bidding and you would have to award the contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So you could not procure it via, you know, solicitation of bids typically.
Let me clarify what I meant, what we meant by that. And on this, on this slide, it says site visits, discussions and meetings. So there are meetings with Valley Water, SVC and Actera as well. On the right-hand side, phone calls with the gentleman Randy Scott from Teamworks Construction and also Tanya Vich. But Randy has run a lot of these. He's been on the bidding side and on the awarding side. And he, his recommendation was to make sure that you've got four, at least, no, he said four bidders that have, that are capable of doing the work. So of course, those four are not being, you have to go with the lowest qualified and responsive bidder, but you want to make sure that you've got four bidders that understand the project. And his rationale for four was there will probably be one qualified bidder that has to drop out because they don't have enough bandwidth or for whatever reason. But you want to have three qualified bidders. And then if you get more than that, then that's even better. But you want to solicit for, to end up with at least three solid bids. So just summarizing here on the site visits, you can also see the internal meetings that were held with City Engineer Jessica Khan and also our chief building official. We had multiple meetings. And then I met several times with Gordon Wong, who was the architect that we had engaged. And then also, I met Liz Gibbons in person. She's with Campbell City Council. And she's also, AIA is the Association of Institute of Architects, I believe. And so she's a registered architect and she's been through lots of these. And then she's also a director of SVC. My point is, is that I tried, we, Javon and I, the mayor and I, tried to get as much input on the process as we could to see how we can change the project a little bit, but also get the best possible bid on it. If you could go to the next slide, please. So these are some of the features that we'd like to include. And some of them are the same as before. So example, the solar panels, the battery storage and the EV charger. But there's also other features that Valley Water likes to see, would really like to see, and then also Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Like a lot of people don't understand what gray water is, how to capture the rainwater off your roof. And then moving from turf and grass to native landscaping. So that when you go into El Sereno, you can see plants there and you see those same plants on our landscaping in front and maybe some boulders and other things. In any event, these are all features that would be very helpful for our residents to see. And Liz Gibbons, she thought that this would be very helpful for the residents of Campbell to be able to see it because it's a public building. I spoke with a council member in Saratoga and they thought it would be helpful. And then Los Gatos as well. So I think there's some interest so that we could have a showcase. Next slide, please. And here, I think it was in the staff report, but we want to have, we have an obligation for an emergency center. The three bids are there with the unresponsive bid. And then there's the fourth bullet is the motion for the Ad Hoc Finance Committee to take a look at this. And then the last bullet, we're saying that we're recommending those changes on the prior slide and we believe that it can be completed by December 31st, 2022. Next slide, please. And if you say, what are we building? Basically, we're going to remove that driveway from Highway 9 and have an ADA walkway in a patio and then renovate the existing non-compliant structure into a fully functioning public facility that meets the existing codes. And if you look at it, it's really, it's not a large ADU, it's a medium-sized ADU. You know, so this is not a complex thing. And then what was included in the in the request for proposals previously was the resealing and the restriping of the city hall parking lot. And we recommend that that not be included in 2022 because there's other requirements. And Engineer Khan can speak to that maybe, well, maybe right now. Do you want to just explain that one, Engineer Khan?
Sure, just briefly, the city's municipal stormwater permit is being renewed this year. And there'll be a presentation to council before this happens. But one of the requirements that will likely be in that permit is the city will have to convert some of its public space. And being the only public space we have is City Hall to some type of green infrastructure. And really, the only place we have for that is our lawn in our parking lot. So it would be ideal to hold off any kind of renovation to that parking lot till we see what those requirements are exactly with the renewal of the permit this summer.
Thank you. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is the original design concepts from 2021. And the the key components there is that third bullet, the existing parameter walls remain the same. So not changing the footprint at all and that is as well going forward. Then previously, the objective was to minimize the number of changes to control the costs. And there are some changes that we're recommending that would would increase cost, but they would have a benefit to the increased cost. So if you could go to the next slide, please. The bid cost was very high. And there's a number of reasons that various people identified. And this slide summarizes those points. On the left-hand side, it's what was in the 2021 RFP and then what changes could be recommended for 2022. The second row is develop an issue of concise bid package with simple and easy to understand plans. And the bid package that was put out was actually fairly complex. And I know that several people were like, our chief building official was trying to simplify it. But it just, it was the construction drawings for the building permit. And there wasn't, for example, it wasn't easy to do what's called a takeoff, identify the quantities that are required. It would take a long time to put a bid together and a lot of work. And then the final row, remove sheet rock and insulation from existing walls to show the actual construction. What that's important and everyone identified that is because a contractor will have to bid a fixed fee for the work. And what they do is if there's some unknowns in there, they will basically increase their cost because they know they'll have to pay for it. So if you can reduce the unknown conditions, then they can sharpen up their pencil because they don't have to have that buffer in there. If you could go to the next slide, please. So there was, without a doubt, that everyone thought that a spread this high indicated that the bidders didn't understand, they weren't all on the same page. And they had a misunderstanding regarding the scope and the details. And Jessica, you thought that the bid should differ by less than 20%. And when I showed this to Liz Gibbons, she said that number should be 10%. But again, it's a small project, so you can expect some variability. But this difference is significant. So the third bullet point, their bidders will be asked to review the existing building in person again and the changes in the scope and features in the new RFP will be explained clearly. So that should, we're looking to eliminate the unknowns and to make sure everyone's got a common understanding of what they're bidding on. Next slide, please. So this timeline was completed and it shows the front end between now, this meeting, the update to city council in April and when the time that we award the contract, if we choose to go forward with this. And then from the awarding the contract to open to the public, those are not our timeline, the contractor's timeline. But it's just, it was validated with contractors to make sure that this job could be completed by December 31. And you see in here that it could be completed by November 30. But you also see that in June, from the day that you award the contract, when they start work, you know, that you have to, the contractors will have to line everything up, make sure their sub-trades are available and their own people are available. So there's some cushion in there. But the timeline will be their timeline, not ours. But this was just to make sure that the Ad Hoc Finance Committee could believe that it could be done by December 31. What I'd like to do now is just focus on the front end of this, April, May and June. If you could go to the next slide, please. So here you see the update to city council. What we're looking for is some direction. And then there's three activities, review of Silicon Valley Clean Energy, Valley Water and Actera and get their input and essentially see if they would like to help in the in providing some funding for this. And then what we'd like to do is then finalize the features for the bid package. And then it will take approximately two weeks to update the bid package and simplify it. And I spoke with Gordon Wong about that and that fits with his timing. And so the RFP would go out at the beginning of May and it has to be published. And then I believe we could receive and open the proposals before the end of May, that the weekend of the May 23rd. So this is what takes us to a decision. And then on May the 20th, or the first council meeting after that, we would then have a an accept, accept the lowest bid that is qualified and responsive. Or if the bids are poor, then we could reject it again. This does not commit us to going forward. Next slide, please. So here, we thought we'd go through a few numbers and there's some things that we're eliminating and then we're adding. And the first sort of, I won't go through the individual line items, but increase the building efficiency, durability and comfort. And so the net increase in the lower right-hand corner, there is 19,000. If we could go to the next line or next slide. Here is having an all-electric building and this would be an increase of around $14,000. And again, be soliciting Silicon Valley Clean Energy so that they could use this building as, to show people what a heat pump water heater is because people just don't know that today. Next slide, please.
Ryan, you may want to touch on what the benefits are of all these things. You had them in the bullet point at the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just kind of highlight those because we're talking about more expenses. We need to be able to justify those.
Right, I've got a justification slide at the end on a cash basis, on a rate of return basis. But you can see that the benefits of going to all-electric, for example, are that there's no combustion inside, so better indoor air quality. There's some rebates on electric appliances and they may, SVC may provide some specific grant funding. And then also, the all-electric building would contribute to our climate goals. So we would be helping our community, which I think is in our mission. Next slide, please. In reducing the water consumption is important and it's becoming increasingly important. I was really hoping that we were going to have all kinds of snowpack this year and the drought would be over and it was looking so good going into the beginning of January. And then all of a sudden, you know, we had these horrible record amount, minimal amounts of precipitation. So reducing water consumption is pretty important. So this would be a net increase of around $12,000. And again, Valley Water should have some funding available on that. And then again, it would contribute to our our climate goals for 2022, 23. Next slide, please. So here, what we tried to do was say, okay, what are the, what are the decreases in operating costs? And it results in some savings. So here's the detail that says, if you reduce the amount of electricity that you use on one hand, and then you'll be increasing the amount of electricity as well. If you reduce your natural gas and you reduce your water, where are you at the end of the year? And we came up with around $4,730. That's what the cost savings of these different items would be. Next slide, please. So if you say, if you go to the prior slides and you say, okay, if you have each row is is the is the bottom of each slide. The net increase on the right hand side is net increase in 19,000, 14,000 and 12,000. So it gives you 45. And if we have operating cost savings of 4750 a year, and we're not including inflation and that sort of thing, it just, you know, they're all estimates, but you know, 10 year, 10 years is worth that $47,500. And the simple payback is like nine and a half years. So it's even if we don't get any funding, which would be a worst case scenario. We will still get a payback on the investment to make these changes. Next slide, please. So again, here's the potential grants and and funding. And what I would propose, if council wants to go forward with this. I will, I've been in contact with with the various, those three agencies. And what I'd like to propose is that they don't give us funding upfront. What they should do is say, okay, we'll commit to this when it's built. And so that it has the features that are valuable to those agencies so that they can they can use it to to promote the move to clean energy being electric, reduce water usage. And then Actara has, is kind of broader than that, and they include a number of different things, but it all has to do with with energy and in raising the quality of indoor air quality and outdoor air quality. I also believe that I've I've got a commitment from some suppliers to provide discounted fixtures. But those those numbers don't really move the needle that much, you know. So this is, this comes to the end of the formal presentation. So if you've got some questions and comments, that would be great.
Brian, and again, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work you've done on this and going out and meeting with everybody else, the bidding with the right people. So that's wonderful. And just to point out in the staff report, there's already funding of, there's already 180,000 proposition, 68 grand. We've already approved a budget of 600,000 in for this project. Silicon Valley has previously given us 18,000 for solar power installation. But that was the grant two years ago, and I believe there's another 18,000 coming this year from the new grant. And we have also got unrestricted resorts. And we we previously expended about $63,000 already on the project. So there'll maybe, there'll be a little bit more expenditure for getting the bid packet reduced to a format where bidders can bid on it. And and to clarify, this is going to be public bidding. It isn't like we're just going to go to some bidders and say, okay, you get to bid and nobody else does. Everybody gets to bid. But we will encourage so some bidders. So we will try to make sure it is for for proper bits coming for qualified bits coming. So that's, that's the process. So discussion, anybody have any questions, Aubrey or staff, please go ahead. Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I had a couple of questions. I think this is great. This is quite exciting and I like the idea. How do you propose we reduce the unknown conditions? Is that? Should we have the foundation inspected? Should we check for asbestos? Should we check for mold? I mean, are those easier thinking of?
Could you go back to, I think it's slide three, please? One more, one more, please. Slide four. Next slide. And the next one, six. And the next one, seven. Sorry, I there is that last, the last row on slide seven. We don't, the problem is we don't have at what are called as-built drawings. And for most, for most public, for for most buildings, you they want to renovate, that you want to change, you have what's called an as-built. So so the bidders know what's there. And then we don't have those. So on the right hand side, it says, remove sheetrock and insulation from the existing walls to show the actual construction. So for example, in the, in the structural requirements, there are these things that are called hold downs. And you make it and and there there are certain requirements. So if, if the building doesn't have those, then the contractor is obligated to put those in. So when they go to bid on the job, they're like, we don't know what's there. We've kind of walked around and looked at the building. But we really don't know what's behind the, what's behind the curtain, if you will. And I know that council member Luther had done some renovations before. And when whenever you watch a renovation program on TV, you always hear, you know, well, this is what we think it's going to cost. And then once they start the demolition and and removing some of the things, then they say, oh, we didn't count on this. So we're going to have to increase the budget, you know. And so what you want to do is eliminate all those potential surprises, uncertainties and unknowns. Councilmember Lawler, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. It makes perfect sense. So then I guess that, well, that certainly addresses what's inside the walls and how how it's built, obviously. What about the foundation?
The foundation is, we're not changing the existing perimeter of the building. And there are, I believe it's two or three foundation additions that have to be made. And the building official, Ali Fadipour went through those with me. And what we could do is make sure that the crawl space is visible underneath the building. So we we could certainly do that. But there's only, I think, three changes to the foundation that are required.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was, I was thinking more of whether there's cracks in the foundations over time from earthquakes, et cetera. I mean, and I'm thinking of unanticipated issues with the foundation, but.
Okay, so what what you would do is you would see the, by removing the sheetrock, you'd see what that connection is like between the Joyce and the foundation. So you wouldn't be able to see the, not 100% of the foundation, but you'd have a pretty good idea. As well, if if there were was, if there was settling or something like that, you should be able to see it by by removing the the sheetrock and the insulation.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilor Luthold, please go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to put a quick question out. I don't know if this has been addressed here so far, or maybe should be addressed. And that is, it looked like we had a contract with the architect for not to exceed like $24,500 and we've spent about $60,000 with the architect. And I'm wondering if that's something that's come to the ad hoc finance committee's attention or something that you might want to look into sort of separately and sort of related to this. But there's that issue that we may have huge cost overruns already. And apparently, if that's the case, this may actually be a problem in terms of how the contract was done and what's been done then following up on it. But related also, I think, and kind of Ms. Lawler brings this up, and you brought this up indirectly. Sounded like maybe we need to do some demolition in order to expose the walls and these connections, which may be a good idea. But then that's going to increase our costs. How do we make sure that we're not creating our own huge cost overruns by getting started and doing things in pieces and parts and doing them over and over again?
Okay, let me unpack your your questions and comments. The first one had to do with the agreement with the architect. And that agreement was not included in the bids. That was paid for previously and before, before the RFP went out last year. So I don't think that there's any quote, anything that would hit the budget going forward. The one thing that we would have to pay the architect for is the update to the bid package. And he gave me a number that was around $6,000. So, you know, it's it's a, it's a couple of weeks worth of work. And then your other question was, there was one of, oh, if we remove the sheetrock. Well, what the bids include, one of the steps is you have to do demolition anyways. And demolition includes removing the sheetrock and removing the insulation. That's all a throwaway. So so you either do it now or you do it later. In fact, that would, it would, you're pulling that expenditure forward and you're not including it in the bid. It would, wow, it would be included. So for for, let me, let me explain a little more. You just want to remove the sheetrock and the insulation. What you don't want to do is remove the fixtures, like the toilet fixtures. You don't want to remove any of the framing. You just want to have basically the bones exposed. And the, the removal of of those other items that I mentioned, that would all be the responsibility to the contractor. So there's no duplication of effort whatsoever. And I believe that city manager Leon Artis, he could get that work done within his with his, within his spending authority. So we wouldn't have to get, we wouldn't have to solicit bids on that. And it wouldn't be a full scope of what a bidder would refer to as a quote demolition. Does that answer, does that answer your questions, Councilmember Luther?
Yeah, mostly in terms of what's current. The other thing that I was interested in having the finance committee take a look at is the history on the contract with the architect. Because we did apparently have a shall not exceed contract. And that looks to have been overrun by well over 100, 150%. And I'm trying to, ultimately, we need to audit that and understand how that happened, if that happened. And if so, where's the responsibility for controlling that? And what do we do about that?
Okay, that in terms of what the ad hoc committee did, we didn't look at that contract. So it wasn't part of our scope, if you will, but but we can take a look at that, sure.
It's, it sounds like that could be a proper agenda item. So I would ask the city manager to please make a note of it. And if you can give us the information to the finance committee, we can also look at it after we we're through with this project, or at least after we got this on the ground. And then if it looks like it's something that should be brought back to council, we can put it on the council's agenda. Would you please make a note of that, Mr. Leonardis?
Duly noted.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Did you have anything else to say?
Oh, I I see. No, I have nothing else to say on that, but Councilmember Turner has her hand up.
Right, I was going to go to her next. Please go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Well, thank you for for asking me to be your budget talk tonight. I first wanted to make some comments and then I have some questions. And and really, when we first talked about the annex, we were looking at spending 250,000 to do ADA improvements. Then the project grew into a library and we approved the $600,000 to be spent. And now we're looking at a, and and one third of that was supposed to come from grants, right? So we also made the assumption at that point that the economic conditions would be improving. Now, this is clearly no longer the case. And I'm I'm a bit concerned about this because the cost of this project is now estimated at almost a million dollars. Right, $900,000. And it probably will not stop there based on a lot of your your questions. Now, it is designed to be, and I'm quoting here what you guys said, a showcase for energy efficiency, all electric and water conservation. And that's good. It's also going to have a Tesla roof and a Tesla power wall for battery backup. I think that's probably the most expensive solar solution available. So I questioned the feasibility of of some of the solutions you have here. Because this level of backup power on a building is good. But if it's only going to be used lightly, then I question the visibility and and of the solution. I also noticed that the building will be replumbed to recycle water from showers and sinks for landscaping. I didn't even know that we had showers in that building. The plan calls for ripping out the driveway and landscaping, like you said. And also I have this one other question. Now, there's a reference here in the proposal to using the building as an emergency center. An E O C. But we already have a fully equipped and staff E O C in Los Gatos. And to to equip this as an E O C is going to be very, very expensive. Now, are we supposed to duplicate that effort? Where are we going to get the equipment and the staffing? And how are we going to find the knowledge and skills from staff to be able to operate this as an E O C? The other question I have is, we talked about an EV charging station in September. I think it was Councilmember Lawler and Councilmember Luther who said that we spent $15,000 to put in the current charging station that is barely used. And now we're going to propose spending $18,000 for a new one for that charging station. I I think this is a beautiful building and and it is a beautiful design. But I question, is this the best way to spend our citizens' tax money? Do our residents really want us to spend their money on a showcase for energy efficiency? So I think with with my comments here, what I'd like to to do is to really look back and see and and talk to to get citizen support. Okay, and not just assume that we're going to do this. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, you could be asking me, well, how did they do it in the past? The past councils have managed city money very frugally. We always had up to two years of reserves as a cushion for difficult times. And I know you would argue that perhaps they were too frugal. But I am concerned here that stepping out too far out of that mold, But I am concerned here that stepping out too far out of that mold. Especially as we're, we're facing difficult times in our economy is, is, is not the best solution. We all have already drawn down our reserves. We're proposing to reduce them by another 890,000 dollars. And we are in uncharted economic waters. So I don't think we should be spending close to a million dollars on things that are not essential to running the city business. The new community center would be nice to have, but I don't see spending close to a million dollars. When we are experiencing the highest inflation in forty years with no end in sight. And therefore, I would think that we should step back and take no action. On, on this until we hear from our citizens. So if, if you could answer some of the questions that I have, I know it was, it was, I had a lot of questions in there. I sure would appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. If you could move to the next slide, please. I want to address your first issue. Okay? Nowhere did the finance committee represent that this would be a million dollar project. I personally believe that the number. On an apples for apples basis should be. Should be below 700,000. Call it, call it 750 with inflation now. So that's the first one. So, so your, your 900,000, that number's got to be dropped dramatically. And you know, if you look at this, the range is unbelievable. We should be having a much tighter range. So that's, that's the first issue. The second one with respect to the, the Tesla. Roof and the, and the, the battery storage. It, forgive me for not explaining it, but, but that would be re-scoped. I believe that the, and I, I believe city manager Leon Artis believes that the Tesla roof. Solar roof, it should be just playing solar panels. And we'll look, we will integrate that with the plans. The next item that you raised was gray water. And gray water is. Or sorry, the next issue that you raised was the shower. And the purpose of this, and, and I would ask city manager Lee and Artist to jump in. I believe that we have to have a shower, an ADA restroom, and. And sinks and a kitchen facility so that we can, if there was a wildfire. Or an earthquake, so that our residents would have a local place for them to come. So that they could. You know, we have some facilities for firefighters. Or emergency personnel, and then also for local residents to come, get a wifi connection. If theirs are, is, are down. And to charge cell phones and that sort of thing. And you saw that up in all of. In, in north of San Francisco with all the emergencies up there in the past couple of years. Then the, so that's why there's a shower in there, and that shower was in the prior RFP. And nothing is, that, nothing has changed. The next issue that you had raised was turning it into a showcase. Well, turning it into a showcase is not the drive. That's a byproduct. If you're going to bit, create, renovate this building, then at the same time, why don't you add additional value to it? So that it can show our residents how to move to an all-electric building. What a heat pump, water heater is, what a heat pump is, that sort of thing. Moving to gray water. Gray water is, is, has been around for a number of years. But this building gives us an opportunity to, to actually use gray water. And gray water, what you want, it's, it's not the water from a kitchen sink. It's the water from a bathroom sink, and it's the water from a shower. It's not the water from a toilet whatsoever. That's black water. And the way that the building is designed. You've got enough of a vertical drop so that gravity can take the water out of the sink. The two bathroom sinks, and you could water the landscaping between the buildings and Highway nine. And you could also take the other water from the shower, and then that's low enough. And you, but yet high enough so you could take it over to the north part of the driveway and provide irrigation there. So I think that answers the questions that I wrote down. But maybe I missed a couple, Councilmember Turner, did, did I miss some?
Yeah, so, so is the lowest bid that you accepted 890,000 dollars?
No, not. The bids.
Or for, for the configuration that you have today, this configuration.
No, there was, we rejected all the bids.
That's, that's not what it says.
This is the, this slide says, it's the historic, it's from Kent Construction, 101 Builders. NBC Construction. Could, could you go to the prior slide, please? Michelle, and then one more back. Sorry, I don't, and one more. And one more. There it is. The second bullet point, three responsive bids were unsealed on August 25th as follows. The NBC 101 Kent Construction, those are the three bids that we ended up rejecting. And then the fourth bid was, it's called unresponsive because they didn't, they didn't meet all the requirements, and that was for 505,000. We, I was just, the finance, ad hoc finance committee was going back and we were looking at those bids and we were asking people. What did we do wrong? What could we, how could we improve this? How could we get a tighter range of bids? I'm sorry if, if it was misleading. That's, does that clarify it?
Yeah, well, so is that not the, the proposed cost?
No, it's not the proposed cost at all.
So what is the cost then?
Well, we don't know what the cost will be until we get some bids for the cost. But if you were to ask me, what do I think the, the cost will come in at? I think around. I think it'll be under, under 750.
Well, if you don't have a real bid, then you really, you really don't know what the cost is.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, all we're doing today is authorizing that process. We previously budgeted 600,000, but we also now have grants of approximately 180,000 plus. Maybe 18,000 and 18,000 and perhaps another 18,000. So I, I, I think it's still been in line with the project. So when the bids come in. City council is, is going to have to approve the lowest qualified bid. And at that time, we'll get a chance to look at it again and say, yeah, it's too expensive. But this is just about right. But we, we have to get this process moving, otherwise that building is just sitting there. One other thing I wanted to talk about is.
Can I finish my, my question then, please? I have, I want to go back to slide 14, I think it is. Or. Yeah, so, so I, I, I think I have a question about this. You say eliminate water heater. The natural gas, you eliminate HVAC, so therefore you save 3,000 dollars. But then the problem is, you don't have to eliminate something that's working properly. So I, I just don't understand why we eliminate things that are not broken. Why fix things that aren't broken and incur the cost of additional. Building, additional material and additional installation. I just, I just want to make sure that we're using the, the tax money wisely.
Understood. Let me, let me explain this. The first row, reduce the heating slash cooling load by adding more insulation and changing the walls. To add a two by four inner wall, if you will, to the existing wall that's not. The existing wall is structural, the wall that we would add, it would be non-structural. That would. That would reduce the heating and cooling load. So, so. Your electricity would go, bill would go down by 2,400 dollars a year. Okay? The next one is eliminating the water heater. The water heater is powered by natural gas, the, the one that's in the existing plant. So you would eliminate 250 dollars worth of natural gas. But on the left-hand side, under electricity, you would add a heat pump water heater. So you'd add 600 dollars in electric, in electricity costs. Okay? Then eliminate the HVAC. That would be the exist, the, the HVAC that was specified in the. In the, in the existing plans. So you'd reduce 3,000 dollars. But then you'd add a heat pump HVAC that would increase electricity costs by around 1,000 dollars a year. Okay? Then install intelligent operations. So this is so that things turn on and off. Without manually hitting switches. So you'd save around 100 dollars a year. And then removing the natural gas stove would be, you'd reduce the natural gas for that. So there's your 100 dollars a year. But you'd add an induction cooktop slash electric oven. So you're reducing your cost of natural gas by 100, but you're increasing your electric cost by 100. And then net overall. If you reduce your water consumption, you'd probably have savings of around 600 dollars a year. So it looks like, I, I, what I did was I took the number out, or we took, we took the. We removed the number and then we added in what the new component would be.
So, if you eliminate the HVAC. And you replace it with something else to make it the showcase. Then aren't you wasting the money? Because HVAC works.
Well, you see that the 3,000 dollars comes out and the 1,000 dollars goes back in. Could. And let me show you where that would be.
I think there's some confusion. There isn't an HVAC there now that works. This is just in the plan. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, if you go to slide 12.
Go back one slide. Go back one slide. Slide 13.
Go back one more. See, right now, if you take the specified HVAC out, that's 30,000. And you put in one that's more expensive, that's 40,000. So you're spending 10,000 dollars more, but you're going to save some money on the operating cost of that.
Go to the electric one. I think it's, it's, it's.
This is the electric, all electric.
Oh, okay. Go back one slide more, please. Here, this one. What, why were you eliminating fiberglass?
Because it's, because it's being replaced by the two by four framing. And the closed cell spray insulation to the walls. The ceiling was already specified to have closed cell spray insulation. And that remains the same. So the net increase, you take the insulation out for 18. And you put the framing and the new insulation in for 30. So your net increase is 12.
You add special installation is what you're saying, right?
That is correct.
So.
Adding additional insulation, it's, it's thicker. You're increasing the building efficiency.
So I need to take out existing installation. To add new installation, and we don't know what the cost savings will be, do we?
Yeah, we, we do, but just, just a second. That. Eliminates.
I'm sorry, I, I have to, I have to understand this because I don't want us to be spending money unnecessarily. So that's why I'm asking you.
Councilmember Turner, I don't want to spend money. We don't need to be spending anyways. We're both on the same page there. That's why I, I'm like, let's try to reduce. To get a, a better bid package out there and get better bids back. So. There's going to be insulation that's put in, in the specifications of the new building. So if we're changing that, what I, in, what the ad hoc finance committee did is. We simply said, let's take out 18,000 and then put back in 30,000. The net increase is 12. If you could go forward, I'll just link this to the annual operating savings on slide 14. So that's where you're going to get that 2,400 dollars reduced heating cooling load. That's 2,400 dollars. So if you invest the additional money, then you'll get, you'll save 2,400 a year on that.
Well, I think, I think one of the things we need to do, to do here is to get citizens' input. On, on, on all these things that we're changing. And, and in my, in my, from my perspective. It could be unnecessarily. So that's just my take on it. So, so thank you for going through this.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. And I, and I just want clarification, Brian. It's not like there's really working insulation there now. We're only talking about changing the plans where a certain fiberglass insulation was going to be put in. But instead of that, you're putting a better insulation. Is that correct?
Not only are we putting in better insulation, but we're putting in more of it.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to be clear, though. It's not like you're taking out any insulation.
Oh, that is correct. That is.
I think Councilmember Turner might be confused thinking that the insulation that's there. Should stay there and we'd save 18,000, but it's not like it's there. I mean, that building is so old, there's probably useless insulation in there. So all these things that are being eliminated aren't really being taken out. Or they would be functional if they stayed there. It's like, it's only a big change on the plan, what was there before to what's coming out, what's going to be new. Is, is that correct, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, yes, it is. And, and Councilmember Lawler has been very patient.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that clarified. So sorry about that, Councilmember Lawler, if you want to go ahead and proceed.
No worries, no worries. Everyone has to have a turn. Couple of questions. Okay, so. First of all, I look at this as shifting of assets, right? We've got the money in the bank. We are, we have this asset in the house and we're shifting that money into that asset. And that asset probably, I don't know, I think, I think our houses now are something like 1,200 dollars, 1,300 dollars a square foot. So we're already got a pretty decent amount of value in that property. So we're adding value. And so my question is, and this probably should go to, I guess Sergio perhaps, since we're going for this. Model home, right? There's, there's entities out there that champion these, like the Sunset Home. I think we can all remember the General Electric House that was built in Pacific Palisades and Ronald Reagan lived in it, right? So we have an opportunity here perhaps to, in order to offset the costs that Councilmember Turner is concerned with, and rightfully so. Can we pursue these companies, say GE or, or the solar panel companies? Or, or gray water companies or other entities to donate those to our project in exchange for naming opportunities? It's like an, an advertisement for their products. Is this something that we can do as a city?
Sure, answer, yes, the city can accept donations. And with respect to the insulation issue, if the city is doing construction that affects a building component. Typically, that triggers a requirement to build that, bring that component up to code. So for, you know, some of these changes where the city is making energy efficiency requirements, those may actually just be required as a matter of the. You know, 2019 building codes is adopted by the city. So it may not, some of the stuff that is in the scope that is being discussed may not be optional. And I will defer to the engineer in the building official as to what all of that might be.
All right, so I guess. We'll 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 let that happen, I just wanted to make sure that we are exploring all of the funding opportunities available, because it could really be great, you know, it could really. We could we could, this is a teachable moment for for everyone on how we can be better in terms of water savings and and all of the things that are available to us, and it would be a beneficial. It could help us out in in getting that done, thanks.
I saw council member Luthold had his hand up, then it went down, maybe. His question was responded to, or maybe we're done, I'm not sure.
All right, uh. I I just wanted to add one comment, then we'll go to the public to get their input, uh the solar thing, there's gonna be one other thing that needs to be explored. Uh it may produce more than enough electricity for that building. So there's a some conversation going on that that additional energy could then be used to power up our main building. So we may actually have a bigger uh uh better saving result from all that stuff. And also, that's a way to get subsidies from these different energy companies, and I think council member Lawler brought up an excellent idea, and that. Can also be explored, but the important thing is to get these out. Uh so that the bidding process can start, we waited long on it, and this has already been proved previously approved, so all we're doing is bringing it to the city. Council to look at the new items that provide additional opportunities for subsidies. All right, uh any other uh questions that the council members have of staff or of uh Mayor Prote Mekachak? Cause uh cause number little, did you have any questions by any chance, any comments?
No, I'll uh hold off for now, appreciate the discussion and all of the hard work that's been done and looking forward to. Seeing this go forward, although I do want to comment, I mean, I'm very aware of Ms. Turner's concerns about the budget on this and. To a large extent, agree with them, I'm I'm very concerned about making sure that we have our reserves. Um on the one hand, we want to invest and we want this here for our citizens, and it's been put off a long time. On the other hand, um we are looking at economic uncertainty, so we really need to control the costs if we're gonna get this project to go forward. Uh and that's really gonna be the. Uh kind of the the tension as we do this, because last time we all saw that it was too high. And uh needed to be scoped a little more clearly, um obviously, per square foot costs have gone up, but um. Mr. Makachak, I like your comment about the mid-sized ADU. Um and really, I I'm looking at uh what the per square foot costs for construction in the Bay Area are. And this isn't even construction, this is a remodel. And we're not dealing with asbestos, we're not dealing with black mold, we're not dealing with uh major problems now, of course, we are dealing with, it's a public entity, so people want to charge us more money. Um just because of that, and that's really, I think. Uh something that we need to keep an eye on as best we can, although, of course, the bidders for public entities are a different uh different thing than residential construction, so. We need to let people know that we are very cost sensitive on this, and then we gotta look for grant money where we can get it. So those are my comments, thanks.
Yeah, excellent comments. If there are no other questions from uh city members, I'll go ahead and ask. If there's anybody uh on the public side who wants to ask a question or make a comment at this time. Since it's open for public discussion. Do you have anybody up?
We do have one hand up, um Mr. Edgardo Labor.
All right, please uh have. Join us, Mr. Lever, please go ahead.
Good evening, um may I share um? A picture here or is there a way of doing that here?
You want to share your screen?
Uh yeah, picture.
Okay, I guess uh our city clerk can hopefully help you with that. And you 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 have a question on this particular item? All right. You should see your screen, please go ahead. You're on mute.
Oh, there. Okay, there. Uh great. Can you start the clock now? How does it work?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, start talking.
Okay, uh thanks for your time, um. I really appreciate all of you, I know that uh this is pretty much a volunteering uh position for you, not the professional. Um not professional politicians, so. And I know you're all of your neighbors, although I may have different opinions with you, I really appreciate what you're doing. Um yeah, I'm now the leader for one of the uh neighborhood for. Um the cert program. Um just took on that a few months ago from Patrick Drift that uh. Uh was the lead for the North Santa Cruz neighborhood for many years. Um. Anyway, uh regarding this project. Uh first, I'm going to make some comments as just a regular citizen, and then uh maybe a little bit related to cert, um. Uh if you at another time want to talk a little more about cert, I'm available. For your calls or to come to your meetings. Anyway, regarding the project, um what bothers me is that. Uh it's supposed to be an investment, and an investment usually requires a business plan that shows. What are the return investment? So either, so I would expect something showing either how is it going to make money for the city and pay for the investment on its own? Or how is it going to be used for by community members and? Uh what's the equivalent cost per hour for them versus going somewhere else? And what's the real interest of the community on that, and? My perception is that Montesano is a city of. Uh people that appreciate the minimalist government that we have and the. They balance usually balanced budget that we have, having the resource, and we are not looking for. Our city government to do more or to provide. More service, but just to. Keep what they are doing, doing it better, and. That's pretty much it, so I don't see the need for another structure. Um so that's my personal opinion as a as a citizen, then with respect to cert, just wanted to share this because. Uh I'm not sure how much you are aware of, by the way, um. I know that uh two of you at least are when I was were in my. Cert class, so you may be more aware of this. And I'm aware that some of you like Javid, I know that you talked to Greg. So about cert two, uh so I know that you're a little bit aware, but. Just in case, I don't think you've seen them very carefully, so North Santa uh Montesano is part of four neighborhoods, this is done by the police department. They split the two cities in thirteen neighborhoods. And.
Have about thirty more seconds, the time is.
So I think that there's now some effort to add an ICP. I think that's a good idea, uh because the Montesano West does not have one. Um the consensus by talking to police and cert and to Steve is that the 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 best place right now is City Hall. I think that's a good start, but I think that we need to review the plan and see if there's a better location, maybe close to the fire station or somewhere else, because. The underserved area would be the Montesano West where we don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who has some comments? Yeah. Okay, I don't see any other hands, do you see any any hands, uh? Miss clerk?
No, there are no hands up.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Anybody have any comments from council? All right, I don't see any comments or discussions, or I guess councilor Turner has a comment, please go ahead.
Yes, I just I just wanted to make a uh a little bit more comments here. I think we are experiencing the highest inflation in forty years with no end in sight. You're also seeing that China is again shutting down Shanghai. Entire cities for their next round of COVID, and this is happening today. So we will be seeing shortages in uh. Supply chain and supply chain disruptions. And I think, as you know, we have a war going on in Europe with thirty percent of the continent's grain supply with with Ukraine. And it could very well drag into an all-out war again. So I am concerned about spending this much money. Close to a million dollars without getting citizens input. I would I would. Like to request that you consider getting a survey of the citizens from the citizens before we actually start this process, thank you.
Thank you, councilor Turner, any other comments? All right, not seeing any other comments, and basically, I I think if you have inflation, that's all the more reason for us to move faster on this, because if the cost is gonna keep going up. Uh property taxes are going to keep going up, so that really should not be affecting Montesano. As reassessments happen and because of Proposition Nineteen. Uh any transfer from parents to not almost any transfer from parents to children is gonna get reassessed. I suspect and Montesano city taxes, property taxes have been going up for the last few years, and uh. I don't see us being in a position where we'll be worse off than we are right now. Uh because we are going to be collecting more taxes because of Proposition Thirteen, I mean, every year they go up by a percent anyway. Uh most properties are valued at about twenty five or thirty percent, a lot of properties in our area. Are valued at about half of what the actual value is, so those taxes are gonna be going up, especially since we have an aging population. If you look at the money we have in the bank, we're getting absolutely no interest on it, it's not giving us anything. So it's time to put that, you know, change the assets, move it from one place to another and get the value out of it. So I I would I would ask for a motion to approve moving this project forward, and it's not like the end of the project. Citizens will have a chance to comment on it, once we have the bids, then they have specifically something to look at. And they'll know exactly what we're spending, and at that time, they can tell us, hey, we don't want to get this done, and then we can all consider. Their input and look at what's best for the city and either move forward or not, at this point, you know, we've already done all the comments, we've gone through this before. They've commented on it, we went through a process where we approved it. Until the bids came up and then we decided the bids were too high, and we could we'll get there again. So the expect ex expense right now we'll have is for. Turning up the sheetrock and spending a little bit of money on the. Uh revised bidding project, and that's that's about it, so I think it's worth moving forward with it. Uh councilor little, do you have a comment?
Um I go ahead and let uh Ms. Turner go first, she had her head up, a hand up in front of me and then I'll.
Yeah, no, you hadn't spoken much, so I thought I'd let you go first, go ahead, councilor Turner. You're on mute.
I just wanted to respond to your to your comments about inflation. I I wanted to say here in the nineteen eighties, when inflation was approximately at the rate we are seeing today. Paul Volcker raised the rates to over twenty percent. That stopped inflation. Today, Jerome Powell, he's no Paul Volcker, right? So this Fed rates today. At one quarter of a percent, that's what he raised it out. Real interest rates are still negative seven percent. Negative interest rates. An inverted yield curve is what we're looking at, these are all harbingers of upcoming recessions, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. Those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, uh I don't think that applies to cities, we're collecting money from property taxes. And it it you know, it may actually help us as as prices go up, we'll be collecting more taxes. Uh council member Luthold, please go ahead.
Yeah, well, on the economic discussion, um I I think I agree uh. Uh rather surprisingly, to some extent with Ms. Turner on uh everything she's saying, except um. Uh if and we probably are facing recession uh in the next eighteen months, all indicators point that way. Which could mean this project would be cheaper if we put it off and we're doing this project in the midst of a recession, that said. Um I don't think we need to wait for that to happen, um and and I think the point about the city's uh. Uh finances and the stability of that is well taken as well. Um the points that were made by the mayor just now, we have uh we probably have the finances for this, although we'll take a look at it. Uh when the time comes, but also um we need to. We'll need to bring this back for the public to weigh in on it, once we have real bids for them to look at. So um I would hope that uh the ad hoc committee would stay involved, I would hope that um. The city manager and a city engineer could be very aggressive in working with potential bidders to show them the scope, to make sure there are no misunderstandings. To get them to be very aggressive on these bids, because we do want to build this project, but we want a very competitive price. So uh with all of those uh comments, I'd go ahead and make the motion to go forward with the bid structure. As designed, and uh then we'll take a look at it on the other side, so I'd make that motion.
Motion by councilor Luthold, second by councilor Lawler. Uh any further discussions? If not, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Uh council member Turner?
Um I am going to vote yes, but I want to be sure that what whatever council member uh Luthold said, we're gonna do. Like ask the citizens and 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 be the budget hawk. That's Sean Luthold's description of himself. Thank you.
Council member Lawler?
Yes.
Council member Luthold?
Yes, and I will keep a close eye on this process.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretent Mekachak?
Hi.
And Mayor Lahey.
Thank you, and I I again want to thank Mayor uh Protem Mekachak for doing all the hard work on it, and he's really been focused on. Trying to get the best bid by going forward and uh. And getting the sheetrock removed and also talking to a lot of architects. So he can come up with a better process, so I'm hopeful that we'll get a good uh process bid on it, and then definitely the citizens should give us their input at that time. So I'm voting yes.
Okay, that motion passes five zero.
I I would like to make a a comment that the ad hoc finance committee will stay involved with this. And it is our best interest, it's it's our object. Objective to come back and make sure that we've got a really, we we get a really good number. That our citizens and city council will approve.
All right, we're done with that motion, so we're onto the next item. Which is consider and accept the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty 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 one audit report. Uh there's a staff report on that.
Yes, bear.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yes, this is Reynolds Summer on us, uh finance officer, I want to introduce the auditor partner who. Perform the audit, uh I believe he's online, his name is Mr. Ahmad Garabeh. Um so. Mr. Garbey, if you're online, if you can. Give him access.
Yeah, please go.
Thank you, Reynolds, can city council hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, thank you for having me, uh this is the annual financial report for the city. The scope of the audit. Is to ensure that the financial statements are fairly stated, it is a process. That starts out with uh looking at uh. Certain transactions within the city, we look at the internal controls, uh we look at the manner that you process receipts, disbursements and payroll. Uh we like to see segregation in there. Uh and then we uh confirm the balances are reported on the financial statements. Um we confirm your cash, we confirm your receivables, we confirm your property taxes. Again, these financial statements effectively are. An affirmation of the financial data that was presented to you by management of the city. We come in after the fact and we ensure that these financial statements are fairly stated. Um pleased to let you know that uh. Uh we issued a clean opinion on these financial statements, because you're a government, you are subject to what they call a government auditing standards as well. It's a little different from an internal control perspective in which we have to report on certain instances of internal controls, if we noted any deficiencies. And I'm also pleased to let you know that we reported no deficiencies with respect to the internal control. Uh I want to thank management for being cooperative and providing the. Uh information that we needed, they were very responsive to the information, the request that we needed, we had no audit adjustments. Information that we needed. They were very responsive to the information, the request that we needed. We had no audit adjustments. Or difficulties encountered in the performance of the audit and with that I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? For the auditor? Hey, I don't hear any question. I just had a curious question. I don't know if you can answer that. What's? As you look at these audits for cities. What kind of reserve do they, should cities be keeping? Is it equal to one year's load of expenses or two years' load of expenses or is it related to revenue? Do you have any sense of that by any chance?
Uh, the standard practice is to have a fund balanced reserve. And depending on the size of the city equals to twenty percent of your annual budget. That's the typical reserves now, you know. I, I just saw on the agenda items here and in the discussion during the meeting that there were some. Expenses for a city your size. You know. It's not infrequent that you may have larger expenses. As opposed to a hundred million dollar budget or two hundred million dollar budget for a larger city. So it just differs from one city to the other. I think you have adequate reserves over there.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll turn it over to the public. Does any member of the public have any questions? All right, I don't see any hands raised. So bring it back to council for discussion. And if there's no, yeah, Councilmember, Mayor Pretend Mekachak, please go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the auditors' report. For the city of Monte Sereno.
Thank you. Second. Councilor Lawler, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Pretent Mekachak?
I.
And Mayor Alahi.
I.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going on, thank you for your report. Appreciate that. Going on to the next item, which is this report on C Click Fix customer relations. Is there a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. City Clerk Michelle Estabillo here to provide you a brief update on the C Click. Fix project. At its November sixteenth, twenty twenty one meeting, the city council authorized the purchase of additional licenses for the C Click Fix application. As well as upgrading our service to purchase a Montesirino branded application for resident use. I, I provided a brief update at the council goal setting meeting on March twenty second. Since then, there really are no new updates. The C Click Fix programmers are diligently working. On the Montesirino branded app and we are still planning to have the app go live on both. The Google Play App Store for Android phones and the Apple App Store on April thirteenth. This, the staff report, I provided some sample marketing materials that were generated by C Click Fix. But I also wanted to share an image of what the proposed app will look like. Unfortunately, I did not include this in the staff report, so I'm, I'm sharing it on the screen right now. But this is what the app is proposed to look like once it's downloaded. On your phone and being used by the residents. And that's the end of my report and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or clerk? Okay, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
I do. Thank you, Michelle. This looks great. I'm very excited to see this come online in the App Store. And the materials that you provided us, these marketing materials, is there one in particular that, that we are going with? I'm just curious. If we've got three different, three different.
Three different. We did, yeah, yeah. I was on, I was on mute when I was speaking. Sorry, I didn't realize that. Yes. The C Click Fix provided us with several different. Versions and there were some edits that we, we need to make that they're still working on. Those, one, they haven't particularly branded for a postcard, one for our online presence and one for. Use in, you know, for our own publication that we want to do. So there's not a specific. Marketing material. We just have a variety of marketing material that we can use.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Turner.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make a request. Of, of C Click Fix. You have KPIs, right? Key product indicators that, that you're going to be looking at. The number of registered residents by streets. And I was wondering if you could add the number of residents. For the neighborhood watch groups. We have two active neighborhood watch groups. The, the Greenwood Lane and the. Via Caballero, Twin Creeks neighborhood residents. And then with respect to that, when, when people are sending in their requests, whether it be. Problems with the sidewalk or problems with trash or construction or gutter. If you could also include in a separate category. The, the neighborhood watch groups for Greenwood and Twin Creeks. And this way we can get the neighborhood to actually use C Click Fix much better. Because with the Twin Creeks, we have about a hundred, a hundred. Residents in there. So that's quite a bit for Montesirino.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, one of the KPIs that we'll be looking for is. What requests are coming from those particular neighborhood watch neighborhoods?
Yeah, and then I, I'll give you their names and then you can, you can contact them. And work with them so that they will be the point of contact rather than, than the city.
Okay.
Right. Thank you, and, and I appreciate the work you're doing.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I understand the branding, you're calling it fix it or something else, fix, fix it.
It's going to be called Fix It Montesirino, yes.
Apps and all that would have that name on it.
Yes, it, it, it's, it's so instead of it being called C Click Fix, it would be called Fix It Montesirino. There's still, yeah.
Uh, any, any other questions of council? The Councilor Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to add one more. Michelle, if you could take a video of yourself. To show our, our seniors how to use their, their cellphone with, with this, right? How to download it, it would probably help. And you.
Okay, I.
Next door or, or someplace else.
Oh, sure, I think I could, I could, I can make that happen.
Thank you.
All right, great, and. Let's see. Going to the citizens, does any member of the public have any questions? Are there any hands raised? If not, you can raise your hands now and we'll ask you to. Ask your questions. I don't see any hands raised, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Any further comments or discussion on this item? If not, let's go ahead and do a motion to accept the report. Can I get a motion?
移動
All right, Councilmember Lawler moved, second by Councilmember Amir Pretend Mekachak, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Luther?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Mekachak?
I.
And Mayor Alahi.
I.
And that motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So. We're through our direct, regular agenda and now we have the city committee commissions reports. And if you'll notice on the agenda, we have spelled out all the different committees that we. You know, we can kind of do a double take and make sure if you have a report on some of these items, you can go ahead and give it. The first issue, first matter on the committee commission more is the Cities Association Board of Directors Meeting. That would be me and Mayor Pretend Mekachak. I, I was not able to make that particular meeting. City Manager Leonardus was there. Do you mind covering that report for me? Mr. Leonardus?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, on the West Valley Mayors and Managers meeting, is that what you are referring to?
Actually, I was referring to the Cities Association, but that's a different meeting. The West Valley. The City Association members, okay, let me, let me, let me go back to it. The City Association meeting, I, I had attended those meetings. And basically that's where the issue came out on a settlement with a property. One of the litigation issues which we've discussed in the closed session. And. That report is confidential, so I will not get into that. So the next, I, next committee that's on there is a Valley Transportation Authority PAC, which is Mayor Pretend Mekachak and. Councilor Luthold, if you have a report on that.
I, I'm sorry. Mayor Alahi. Which, which one?
This is, this is the VTA, VTA PAC. If you had a meeting and if you have something to report.
Oh, I thought you were going to go in the order of the list here. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, we, we, we did not meet, we have a meeting coming up. So I will report back on that when there's something to report.
Okay, Silicon Valley Animal Control is next, Councilmember Lawler.
All right, thank you. We'll have a meeting in a couple of weeks. We did have a meeting last month and I'm happy to report that Savaka has done an amazing job during the pandemic. They are back to allowing volunteers to come in at, to the facility and they are still the number one no kill shelter and. They've had to raise some fees for services like spay and neuter because there have been folks. Taking advantage of the inexpensive services that are primarily for the patrons. But other than that, they're doing a great job and I will report back next, after the next meeting at the end of April.
Wonderful, thank you. Next one, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I attended their meetings. They have a solar farm, wind farm project that's going on. And they're also aggressively looking at Reach Code two point O, which is. To, to. Take on the climate change issues that are coming up and the new rules that are going to be coming up. So the. New, new codes will have to be passed, which will incorporate those and they're getting stricter on. And new construction and on remodeling that are extensive and we don't really define. And what the remodeling would become new construction, where you'd have to have all electric appliances. So that's happening with Silicon Valley Clean Energy and they're also funding more. For planning and management type of staff and also we're looking aggressively and. Mayor Pretend Mekachak is also working with them to help us out with the clean energy. The next year that we're trying to make as clean as possible. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mayor Pretend?
Uh, no, the only thing that I'll add is that I will be engaging in a discussion with them over the next. Week or so, trying to generate some enthusiasm and funding support for our. Our community center.
Thank you. And you also have the next report on the Valley, West Valley Clean Water Board.
Yeah, so West Valley Clean Water is one of two. JPAs that, that used to meet in, in, at Monte Sereno. But due to COVID, we. Agreed that we're not meeting in person and we're having a special meeting next week, or sorry, later this week to extend that. And then there will be another meeting coming up. Our next meeting is going to be in, in a month, so I'll report back prior to that meeting and then after that meeting. On the issues facing West Valley Clean Water.
Thank you. And West Valley Mayors and Managers, that's the meeting that I missed. I was not able to attend that. And I'm, I'm asking City Manager Leonardus, he was there if he can report on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the West Valley Mayors and Managers meeting last week. And Dave Cortez was, Senator Dave Cortez was the guest speaker. He covered many aspects and questions about SB nine. His perspective was, it is, you know, when the bill was drafted, it allowed for flexibilities for cities to. Interpret, in some cases as Montesirino has interpreted the bill. To tailor to their own city's needs. So his impression was, in his comments. You know, answered the concerns of the West Valley cities and their different needs regarding SB nine. And his mention of the intentional flexibility, which was written into SB nine. To support the, as much as possible, local control. And again, you know, a number of questions from Cupertino primarily. And their concerns about SB nine and local control. But the gist of it was, the bill was drafted for flexibility and that was. The, the majority of the conversation centered around that.
Thank you for covering that for me. Appreciate that. West Valley Senate Edition District, Councilor Turner.
I don't have a report on West Valley, but I do have a report on emergency preparedness if you want to hear it.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so with. The group finished installing the two cameras, one on Via Caballero and the other one on Keto, Keto Road. The neighborhood watch signs were supposedly delivered to our city manager last week. To be installed in that, in that section there. There, we're also looking at the NICP. Initially, we were going to put an NICP. In, in that area there and by talking to Edgar de La Bearre, he suggested putting it. At the city hall. So that's my report.
Thank you. We have West Valley Solid Base Recycling JPA. We put a mega check.
Yes, this. JPA, there's two, I think I may have mentioned this before, but there's two sides to. This JPA, one is where, what's our collection and hauling of waste? And then the other side is where is the processing of that waste? So those are two separate contracts. And each contract is ten years and we're right now preparing the, we, the JPA is preparing the. RFP for. The hauling contract and it will be issued in the fall. And it'll go out to competitive bid. There's four cities that are involved in that, the other members of the JPA being Saratoga. Los Gatos and Campbell. And. We're having a meeting on that next week on the twelfth. And then some people may find this interesting, other people may not. But I'm going on a ride along one morning to actually see what it's like to collect our, our. Garbage in and yard waste in the city of Monte Sereno. And that'll be on, I think it's the twenty eighth of April and I will certainly be reporting back on that.
Thank you so much for doing that. Just don't put your hands in anything. Youth Commission, Councilmember Lawler?
We'll have to keep an eye out for you, Mayor Pretend, but that, that'll be a photo op for sure. I just wanted to point out that Valley Water is not on this list, so the Valley Water Commission I'm also serving on. And I have nothing to report because we have a meeting next week. And then as far as the Youth Commission goes, our commissioners are working on the Social Justice Award. And they are hard at work at school and we are looking forward to the picnic and. Other opportunities as they arise.
Thank you. I guess we'll add the Seneca Valley Water District. Does that meet monthly or often does that meet?
It meets four times a year.
Okay, yeah, I think we picked up the ones that are scheduled monthly, but we'll address those. And also there's. Councilmember Luther didn't hear from you, so there must be some committees that. You can report on. There are, please go ahead.
Actually, we've got the library JPA coming up soon and so I'll report on that. After, that's actually on April twenty first, so I'll report on that after April twenty first. But I will also be circulating to council members, the library. But I will also be circulating to council members the library schedule of events and I'll make sure Ms. Radcliffe. Mrs. Estabio has that and can post it for people who are interested in the community.
Great, wonderful. And are there any other reports any council member or wants to give? Or comment on? We're getting no more reports. Then we get to council member comments. If there are some comments that still need to be made, please go ahead and make them. And I and let me know if it's a good idea to have have this listed so that we can easily talk about every committee. On every agenda item. I thought we'd put it there just to kind of guide ourselves. But if you think this is going to take too much time and you would rather not have it on there, please let me know. Otherwise, it's going to stay and we'll all get a chance to hear whatever has been, what else is going on? All right, no further council member comments. City managers report, City Manager, I'm sorry, City Manager Leonardis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Three brief items this evening. It was mentioned by Councilmember Turner. The Neighborhood Watch signs were installed last week, three signs in the Via Serena neighborhood. And Twin Creeks area. So take a look, if you're in the area, you will see them prominently displayed. The Peaceful Mountain Monitor, latest edition of our city newsletter, probably hit your mailbox yesterday or today. Look for it. We have a lot of resident participation. I think it's a very, very compelling issue. You know, which engages the community in a number of ways, including a very compelling letter by our own mayor. Thank you for that. And last but not least, next meeting, April nineteenth, we are looking forward to your presence in our council chamber, going back to. A live meeting or what we're calling a hybrid meeting. If members of the public desire not to come in person, they can speak remotely. However, the council chambers will be available for them to speak. In public as well. Again, we are hoping or striving for that to be April nineteenth and that should not be a problem. And we are running a mock meeting on April twelfth, get everything figured out. And we look forward to seeing you all again back at City Hall. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Wonderful. Look forward to that and thank you for putting that together. Future agenda items. There is one item that should go in the future agenda at some point is. Monte Serena's continued participation in the Cities Association. And that has to do with the. The fees that we have to pay every year and the liability exposure that we have. It doesn't have to be on the next meeting, but probably in May or June, we should consider that because I don't want to discuss it with them first. I've. Asked our attorney Rudin also to approach them and see what can be done to make a proper adjustment. Our our annual fee is not that much, it's less than five thousand dollars, but there's a. Exposure that far exceeds our population ratio. So it's it's worth for us to discuss whether we want to continue with it or not continue with it. So. I'd ask you to put that on the agenda sometimes in May or June. Any anybody else have any other future agenda items? Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to bring bring forward a change to our. Construction noise. I think I think you said that we needed a resolution to be able to post. To to, you know, to post construction hours in both English and Spanish on each construction site within Monte Serena, just just to. Just to make it clear to to the, you know, the the builders and labor exactly when they can start. Their operations and I, am I correct in assuming that this has to be done by resolution?
Attorney Rudin, if you could answer that, please.
So our city code sets our construction hours. Now, certainly nothing would prohibit people from. Posting what the restrictions are in. You know, English and Spanish. If I don't know what requires. Folks to actually post the hours on the building site. I assume that's a condition of approval. You know, either in our building permit or our land use permit. And if that's the case, then, you know, that doesn't require a change to the city ordinance if you're not changing the actual hours. You could require as a condition of approval that that information be posted. You know, in English and Spanish on projects moving forward as part of the city's standard conditions of approval.
Okay, thanks. And that so that's not something that we have to agendaize. Can we just? Can staff go ahead and?
Yeah, I'll discuss that with the with the planner and with the city manager.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any future agenda items I'd like to see? Okay, here I. Saying none, I guess. We can move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.